Go ahead and get started. Good evening, everyone. I call this meeting of the Winthrop School Board to order. Please join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. One nation, under God, in the Lord.
All right, we'll go ahead and start off with our roll call. We do have one student representative out today due to a soccer commitment, and we have one of our regular board meetings, Libby, out due to a prior commitment. Are there any adjustments to the agenda this evening?
There are none.
Okay. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Winthrop School Board Meeting of November 5th, 2025, as written, unless anyone has corrections.
So moved.
Seconded.
And any discussion at all? Nope, all does in favor? Thank you. Okay. At this time, we will open it up to public comment. If there are folks on Zoom or those in the room who'd like to speak up, which I don't see here.
We only have Lexi on.
Okay, perfect. We'll close our first public comments section and enter into our report, starting with our superintendent report by Dr. Foley.
Good evening. We have begun our first round of FY '27 budget reviews. Last week, we met with Principal Smale and Dean of Students Joe Burnham to launch the process. And during our administrative meeting yesterday, we began prioritizing district needs. This year, our focus areas include safety, increasing student achievement, and strengthening our capital improvement budget. And I just want to remind the board that the Town Charter Commission will meet on Tuesday, December the 2nd at 6:00. The commission would like to further discuss the adoption of the school budget and how the charter might change to provide more oversight in that area. And you are all invited to attend that meeting. Tomorrow at 9:00 a.m., Megan White, the Director of Teaching and Learning, and I will hold our, one of our three public Zoom meetings for this year. It's going to be at 9:00 a.m. And for those where they are working at that time, the next one will be probably in the afternoon, and then we'll have one in the evening, so that hopefully everybody has a chance at least once a year to kind of weigh in or ask questions. All community members are welcome to join us to learn more about our current work in Winthrop and to ask any questions they may have. Our football team heads to the state championships this Saturday facing Winslow at Lewiston High School at 2:30. We encourage everyone to come out and cheer on our Ramblers. And the Winthrop High School Drama Club will present the Legend of Sleepy Hollow on December the 6th. And please join us for this performance if you can. Our students have been working hard, and we're excited to showcase those talents. During a walkthrough yesterday, our administrators went into several middle school literacy classes as we are focusing on increasing reading achievement, and we observed some excellent explicit instruction that was going on. Students were highly engaged and participating in thoughtful, small group discussions in one of the classrooms on the theme of forgiveness as they analyzed a poem that they had read. The great things are happening here in Winthrop, and that concludes my report for the evening.
Thank you, Dr. Foley. Does the board have any questions or comment? None. Being done, so we'll start with the, go into the chair report. I just wanted to say that we have kicked off our negotiations with our first meeting. That was on Thursday, November 13th. We do have several meetings scheduled out, and then the Town Charter, which Dr. Foley already covered. That does conclude my chair report. Johnny, are you presenting your report with student representatives?
In the high school today was the second peer mentorship meeting. Mrs. DeScooleus and Ms. Marshall are training over 12 upperclassmen to be peer mentors. This Friday will be our second Tech Free Friday. Students will participate in lessons and activities that are tech-free. Intertorial, students play games, interact with one another. During the Tech Free Friday, NHS is putting on their annual Turkey Bingo during advisory period. They will also be introducing the first ever Turkey Bowling coming Wednesday, which you can win a trophy for. And winter sports have started. Basketball tryouts were this last Monday and Tuesday.
Wonderful. Any questions or comments from the board?
None.
Okay, perfect. Well, enter into our committee reports, starting with finance.
Yes, so we met. We did payrolls nine and 10, and warrants AA, 8B, 9A, and 9B. During our committee meeting, just reporting out that we've cut the insurance off the electric buses, and it's going to save us eight grand a year.
Thank you, Tim. And policy?
Yes, we met yesterday and reviewed several policies that we needed to review based upon the fiscal audit of our entitlement programs, which is like special ed and the Title I, Title II. And we'll be bringing those policies to the next board meeting. And then our next policy meeting will be December the 17th at 5:00.
Okay, and negotiations. Basically covered it. We did meet on the 13th, and our next meeting will be on December 2nd. Okay, we'll close out our committee reports, and our administrative reports are in our packet. Do we have anyone presenting?
We do not have anyone tonight.
Okay. Starting off with old business, 5.1. I'll entertain a motion to approve the following policies for second reading. IHC, class ranking, high school. JLI, student automobile use and parking. And BID, board member compensation and expenses.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion at all? Oh, all does in favor? Genetic, thank you all. Okay. Was it our old business and enter into new business, starting with 6.1. I'll entertain a motion to approve the following Title IX policies for first reading. ACAAR, student discrimination and harassment complaint procedures. ACAB, harassment and sexual harassment of school employees. And ACABR, employee discrimination and harassment complaint procedures.
So moved.
Seconded.
And discussion?
Yes, thank you. If you remember, back in April, you adopted these policies. Last fall, you adopted the 2025. And then with the new administrations, it was rolled back to the 2020. And so we brought the updated 2020 policies to this meeting. And Ivy raised a concern at that meeting that specifically, I think, about including like the gender identity under the Title IX. It was around that. And so I had said, we will go back and review and make sure that we have the most updated policies. So when we did that and sent those to our lawyers to check on that, they did have further updates. And even since then, this fall, there had been a few more tweaks. So what I'm bringing to you tonight are the policies that do need some tweaking. So you adopted AC. There was no revisions needed under that. There was also ACAAT. There's nothing that needed to change under that. But then, when you get to ACAB, if you look at the memo that Alexis DeScooleus, our Title IX person created, it kind of shows you the additions that were added. And the biggest thing is that, under the main human rights portion, they have better in the policy separated out what falls under the main human rights law versus the Title IX law. And so I've put the key points in there. And if you turn to page 31 in your packet, Title VII has been added under the main law, which is the civil rights law. And that does recognize gender identity and sexual orientation as a protected class. But it does not show up under the Title IX portion of our policy. So that's the big change under ACAB. And then what happens under ACAAR, the student discrimination, is that they put the regs back into one policy, where previously it was separated out ACAAR I and ACAAR II. Now there's just an ACAAR. And it clarifies when something falls under Title IX versus the main human rights. And that, you know, there's minor changes, like calendar days are all changed back to business days. So that's a change. And then ACABR is just kind of like ACAAR, except it's talking about employees rather than students. So that's back into one policy. And I think those are the big changes that you need to. This is the first read, and those are the big changes that I just wanted to bring to your attention.
Any questions in the board?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that these changes that are being presented tonight did not come through the Policy Committee. We haven't discussed any of this wording on here, so I'm a little concerned as to how this just kind of got pushed through without any discussion. There's a lot of extra language on here since the last time the School Policy Board meeting did discuss these. There's some things that really depict out things on particular races, which is not in the typical Title IX. And I'm just really concerned. And really bothered that this has gone through without any approval or any discussion with the School Policy Committee.
So if you'll remember, and Alicia, I think you were at that meeting, we did bring this to policy. And I don't have the date of that meeting, but at that meeting, we could not reach agreement. And so we talked about how we would bring it to the whole board for a discussion and approval.
There was no discussion about bringing it to the board, but I would like to make some statements. School boards are the only body with legal authority to create, adopt, or change district policy. No superintendent, administrator, Title IX coordinator, or school attorney can rewrite, reinterpret, override, or ignore school board policy. Their role is to follow and implement the policies that the board has already approved. In this situation, the superintendent and Title IX coordinator made substantial changes to the policy without notice to or consultation with the school board or the School Board Policy Committee. These changes were made outside the board's authority and have the effect of undermining students' protections and exposing the district to additional risk. Policies must be enforced as written and adopted by the board, and administrators cannot alter to create new procedures without board approval. The board must review these unauthorized changes, compare them to the original board-approved policy, and take immediate action to correct any deviations to ensure student safety and compliance with both state and federal laws. The discussion, the reason why we did not come to an agreement in the Policy Committee is because it was taken that the changes need to be made according to what was being shared, then having a discussion to decide as to what would be more appropriate action to take. So, I mean, if we want to go further into exactly what happened, I'd be glad to share that. But I would like to keep, you know, reputations kind of intact. But at this point, I think this really undermines a lot of the school board, pushing this through without any discussion. The fact that there was a discussion, my job is to debate, share views on things, and the fact that it was taken outside of those contexts and then pushed through the board is extremely, extremely appalling. The fact that I felt like I have been harassed or intimidated into silence to just go along with these is another really harmful thing. The school is an amazing school system. And then the backdoor stuff is just, you know, it's time for some transparency and a lot of stuff to start coming to light.
Thank you, Ivy. So I do remember being at this board meeting, and you're right, we, oh, I'm sorry, policy meeting. It was a committee meeting. Thank you for the clarification. And there was no consensus made, and so the next step would be to bring it to the board, like we're doing today, and this is why we're here for first reading. And so I think this is a great place to have this discussion. And it's the first reading, and so we're not, we're not voting on it. We're just bringing it forward to the board for discussion. But we're hearing you. And so do you propose any changes? What are you, what are you thinking?
I propose to put it as to the Title IX that is being directed by our government that identifies male and female to be in compliance. The Main Human Rights Act is a discrimination law to institutions, not to students. So the fact that we are targeting, punishing, or making things difficult for students for a institutional law is really hard-felt. I don't think any student deserves to feel uncomfortable or have their rights violated. This is obviously a bigger thing on the table, because, like I brought up before, that yes, we have a state law, but when there is a state law and a federal law that conflict, federal law overrides state law. So I propose that this needs to be put back. There's a lot of extra language that's not in typical Title IXs. I take offense to where it says, particularly points out, page 30, sorry. It says on number A, harassment. Harassment includes, but is not limited to verbal abuse, threats, physical assault, battery, and then added, based on race, including traits associated with race involving hair texture, Afro styles, and protective hairstyles such as braids, twists, and locks. I find this to be discriminating. I take offense to it, because I don't, I feel that when you point out and label as this goes into detail, that's, to me, I take it as being offended by it. And I don't think that should be in there and depicted.
Okay, so that's a proposal. So you would like to remove these sort of when we're defining, based on race, those scripters. The describing, okay, thank you, Erica. The describing, the words here about hairstyles, or braids, or twists and locks. And then what about like color, sex, sexual orientation, those things, pregnancy, gender identity?
Well, gender identity and sexual orientation needs to be removed. As being a member of the LGBT community, whether you are male or female, no matter how you identify, if you're trans or not, you still fall under one unless you're non-binary. I think that those need to be removed. They're covered under State Main Human Rights Act, and they shouldn't be in this, this policy. I think that this needs to be completely gone through and have more time to go through this. Some of the way this is written creates loopholes. If I, if say my daughter is to wear braids, if anyone finds that offensive, can file a Title IX or harassment under this, and then there's an investigation. To take a student to that degree over a hair braid or style, to me, is, that's not what schools are about. This is to protect against what it's designed to with Title IX, with boys and girls spaces, girls and boy spaces, or trans being put into situations that they shouldn't be in either direction. I think this really needs to be gone through. The fact that people feel that it's okay to intimidate or use policies against school board members, students, or parents who try to advocate for their child, brings me to a lot of concern that a lot of these policies are being weaponized instead of helpful. They're being used to protect the institution and not the students. That is first and foremost. And I do, I do want to speak, I don't want to get into my personal business, but I do say that I know exactly how well, from example, how Title IX fails students. My child has been through a situation, Title IX failed it. There was a lot of other stuff involved. As the investigator states that the way the policies are written, and then this one takes it even further, that no matter what child files Title IX under these policies, that is designed to fail the student. So I vote, or I like to make a proposal. I don't have Robert's rules in front of me, but I would like to just go ahead and vote, to put a vote on the table, to adhere to the federal guidelines until we're directed otherwise, to follow recognizing male and female under the, what Trump has proposed or ordered us to do.
Yes, Becky?
So I just want to point out to the board that you can have a federal law, and I would agree with Ivy that a state law cannot trump, trump the federal law. And I guess the best example of this that I'm going to bring up is marijuana. I think the federal law still says it's illegal, even though there are state laws that allow it. And so, you know, that, right? So that can get complicated. But there's nothing that says that you can't have a federal law that only recognizes, you know, as Ivy says, male and female, but that we can't add further protections, which is what the Main Human Rights Commission is doing. It's just further protecting other groups that are not, that are not recognized under Title IX. And what the latest policy that I'm presenting is it made that clear, that these are the things that fall under Title IX, and who's protected. And here are the things that fall under the main human rights and Title VII. And so that's more explicitly written out here. The policy, what we're proposing is that all of our students, as Ivy is saying, if something, if Title IX is failing a student, we want to make sure that we have other policies that are protecting that student, so that all of our students, no matter whether it's due to race or sexual orientation or gender identity, that they are treated with respect and that they are not harassed for any of those beliefs.
Foley, if, just a second, Ivy. I guess where I'm confused here, and I'm hearing Ivy, and I'm hearing what you're saying as well. I'm looking at harassment, just, this is sexual harassment of school employees.
And that's our general policy for all. That has, you can see that when you get to B1, that then that talks about explicitly Title IX. But our policy, we're recommending that we protect all students.
Yeah, I guess what I'm wondering is, I think everyone can agree that sexual harassment or harassment in general is bad for everyone. And so why does the policy then break it down that it identifies specifically people based on race or hairstyles or familial status? Because we can agree that sexual harassment is bad across the board and that no one should be engaging in it. And so I guess I'm wondering if this is the right place for the breakdown?
So what this policy is doing is protecting all students. And then there are, when you get into complaints, you can, your complaints could be under Title IX. And then we're trying to make clear what would fall under Title IX and the avenue you could go through versus, you're right, all harassment is bad, and we're prohibiting, we're making sure that we're prohibiting it under any circumstance. So we're just expanding it, but making it clear when you can file an official Title IX complaint or not. So we're trying to clarify. Does that help?
I think so. I think it does. Ivy, do you have another?
So I'm just going to go into a little bit. So when you create, when you add a lot more verbiage, you're creating loopholes, and you start bringing it down more specific. So let's take out all this wording. All school policies, regardless of how you identify, already cover every student 100%. As a former detransitioner, because I used to be trans, so let's just say. I know very well these policies. I take it very mild to heart. This policy creates huge loopholes. It weaponizes the policy against students. If a girl, it uses a bathroom and feels uncomfortable or feel traumatized or anything, she goes to file a Title IX complaint, she then will become in trouble because she falls under this as well as violating Title IX. Discrimination laws, Main Human Rights Act, is against institutions. It is not against students. So the fact that we create these guidelines forcing boys into girl spaces, or girls into boy spaces, or trans students into spaces that places all of them at risk is disturbing and concerning. The fact that we start bringing this down, if any child feels uncomfortable, this then weaponizes even more. It also creates a bigger loophole, because this empowers the trans policy even greater. So any student who does not identify as trans now has an even bigger policy between the two that's weaponized even greater against them. So let me, let me explain, because it wasn't explained. I'll tell you how Title IX failed my kid. My child was sexually assaulted. It was reported on two occasions prior that there was sexual exposure and coercion on the bus, which went the way it did, until there was a sexual assault on the third time. Trying to file Title IX in our school district is extremely impossible. When you do, it then becomes into policies and procedures that aren't quite followed. Then, the school then determines whether it falls under harassment or Title IX. So whoever holds the power then decides under which policy it states. So as this Title IX policy is written, which includes state language, the Title IX coordinator then gets to decide whether this, whatever parent decides to file a Title IX, they get to make the decision-making whether it's going to fall under the state guidelines or the federal guidelines. That then creates a bigger issue. So to take this policy, and I haven't even drilled down through this or even be able to pull out regs or any of that stuff yet, because this is way more than it's supposed to be. But this really hurts students. And the policy, even prior to all these changes, hurts students, because my kid got no justice for the sexual assault. It allowed the school to not report to DHS, which they did not. They did not report it to the local police department, all three occasions. It wasn't even reported to the Title IX coordinator, who had no idea, until I pushed the issue. So, and then when it came down to it, then they hired a pre-year investigator to come in outsourced, who didn't have any conflicts of interest, would did. So if we want to start talking about how to create these policies, let's find what the errors were and start creating it instead of pushing all this language that hurts and weaponizes it against our students. I don't, I don't care how you identify, but the fact is that this has so much language that if even a student who's not involved feels uncomfortable, this policy can weaponize. My biggest concern is the fact that we have all these school policies. There are, let's talk about bullying harassment. Do you know how many times students are, I've been pulled aside for the last two months of students going to our school to report bullying and harassing in situations? And they're being told, just deal with it. It's no big deal. Don't create more issues. But then staff go through a situation, or administrators, and they weaponize these policies. So because school board are not state employees, school employees, these policies shouldn't have been used against. these policies shouldn't have been used against a school employee, a school board member. But the fact that they're pushing policy that they want written, that they use, but then discourage the students from using. So that, that's a real big concern. And we can go in even bigger because I actually have a letter from a student from two years ago.
Ivy, I'd like to get back on topic where we're talking about the specific policy. If there's language that you'd like removed, I think it's better to identify that than.
I think we just need to go back to the basic Title IX as being directed and remove all this verbs that needs to go. This really weaponizes against all students.
Okay. Any other comments from the board, Dr. Foley?
I just want to assure everyone that, that I did not individually, or Ms. DeScooleas, we did not write these policies on our own. These are policies that go through once there's a statute that main school management gives us model policies to follow. And there are some that are required. And, and this is, you know, some of the ones that are at least strongly recommended and required. So we did not end of, you know, when, when Ivy is saying there's too many words in here, this is what is, is recommended. And so this is what we're bringing to you and to make sure that it reflects current law.
Thank you, Dr. Foley. Any other board members?
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm trying to follow what Ivy is saying just so I understand kind of both sides of the issue. How, I, I hadn't thought of it in the way that it would create a disadvantage to some students. Are you able to share a bit more about how that would be the case with the proposed language?
And let's just keep in mind, we can't talk about individuals.
No, I'm just saying as an, I can't quite wrap my head around how it does. So it would be helpful, I think, for me to understand that.
You mean, like, just in general?
Well, yeah, you had said this language could be weaponized against some students, and I'm not quite understanding how that would.
All right, so let's take the Afro hairstyles that put in here, which, one, I take offense to it because, you know, hair texture doesn't belong to any particular race. It doesn't belong to any particular, especially braids, twists, locks. So as a child who was raised by black parents, my hair, I use braids and everything. That's how I was raised. If a student, say Joe Smo, thinks that, say, I come to school and I wear braids, you know, because mama did my hair, they take offense to that because they're saying that belongs to an Afro hairstyle. They can then file a Title IX harassment based on this language against me.
Is it only because we have very specific language in the policy that that would be the case? Or if, even if the language didn't exist, could that scenario still happen?
No, because you can't, it's not like I'm like, say, like I come up to you and, and call, like somebody comes up and calls me ethnic slurs. That should fall under the policy. But a hairstyle, to take it to that extent, is, is concerning. So the fact is, when you broaden the categories or the information, so harassment, plain and simple language. But when you start adding words to what harassment was, then you're allowing so much more to fall under this. So the fact is that we're starting to weaponize words. We're starting to make words bigger than what it really is. Harassment should fall under what harassment is in, in the, in the books. So no matter how you identify or whatever, you file harassment order, they will decide whether it falls under it. But if you have particular wording on your policy, then when you file it, well, now it has to go through Title IX and harassment. So this weaponizes against students even more. So that's the problem.
So can we, can Ivy, would you like to propose then that we strike this, the, the language that has been added in for this? Is that a proposal that you'd like to make?
I'd like to propose putting it back to what we are being directed, identify male or female, take out all this extra stuff, list harassment as what it legally states in the law as what harassment is, is really includes, and not all these little lightweight stuff. We need to, what Title IX really states is what we need to put it as. What sexual assault is, we need to list it as what it is. My concern is that these school policies, if you go through all the schools that are going through issues, a lot of these policies are being weaponized against students and families who advocate for their child. These policies are failing students and not helping students. My story, my kid is only one. The fact that I went to a policy meeting, and I, a policy meeting, and I shared my perspective, and then it was, this policy was weaponized against a school board member, which wasn't supposed to be used in the manner it was. So I mean, if these simple things can happen, then adding this extra verbiage, what does that then currently create for the students? The fact that a student has to be careful as to what they wear, how they speak, how they put their hair, how their parents put their hair? Because now they have to worry about even more language and.
Ivy, so this is, we're talking about the policy. This is, it, policy committee couldn't agree, we'll bring it to the board. So what I'm asking for is your proposal. And so you're just asking that we strike through the identifying features of, of, like, the races? Like, I, I need specifics so that I can.
Well, I think what we need to do is get the original Title IX as to what it should be and sit down and go through it because there's a lot of added words and a lot of stuff taken out.
Could you get us the original language?
Yeah, I can work on getting it.
Is there original, is, is there something before this that?
I actually have a school board policy before any of these changes were ever implemented. And then I also have one that is general, that goes to what it should be.
Dr. Foley, go ahead.
You adopted these policies. The 2020 policies were on. It should be right on the policy. Sorry, just give me a second.
Is it April?
What was the one before April, Tim? Is there something else there before April? Because usually we keep.
October 2024 prior to April.
Okay, so you, at some point, you had the 2020 policies. Then last fall, you adopted the, the 2025 policies. The, the policies that were in effect before the 2025 policies were the policies that came from main school management. If anybody's adding additional words, they're, they're doing it because they're reviewing the latest laws and looking at what should be in there. So you adopted those. Then we adopted the new 2025. And then a new administration came into office and we went back to the 2020 regulations. And remember that the law is the law and then policies are adopted on the interpretation of that law. And that's where, where I would not be advising the board to be trying to interpret the law and put it into their own words. That's why you have, as a board, main school management, to help you navigate that. And Ivy is right, the board is the one that adopts policies. And no one here, and I guess I'm speaking for myself and the other administrators, are trying to circumvent the board's duties. You, you only, not only, but there are, policy is one of the big areas that the board, it's one of the duties to adopt and policies. And then you expect the administration to implement those policies. So when we're talking about less wording, you are talking about the policy committee going back and creating their own interpretation of Title IX in the main human rights. I would not recommend that.
I think what I, what I was referring to, I remember having this conversation with, when Alexis DeScooleas was here and, and Ivy was alluding to a policy prior, and I think it might have been the 2020 policy, that didn't include, I think.
Gender identity.
The descriptors. And so I don't, I think, I remember her asking for it, but I don't think we ever got it. And so that's what I was, I was thinking of. If there was, if there was that policy that we had, I don't think we ever voted on that. I don't think it ever came to the board. Or, or it didn't certainly, maybe it came to policy committee, I'm just not sure.
The, these are the most current Title IX policies that are being recommended by the state.
Thank you, Ivy.
So let's just say the, the, the board that she talks about, the Main School Board Association, is a nonprofit organization. It's not state, it's not state or federally recognized. So anybody can be part of that. So it's just like a nonprofit, like, say, I have a nonprofit of Pure Leaf. I can recommend anything. It's not, they, they're only out for whatever they, they want. But if I look at this, I'll bring up an example of how this is weaponized. After a formal complaint has been filed.
Can you give us the page number?
Um, yep, sorry, 43. Down on number E. So it says, after a formal complaint has been filed, and if the AAO Title IX coordinator believes the circumstances are appropriate, the Title IX coordinator may offer the parties the opportunity to participate. That language is throughout. So this basically states that if the Title IX policy believes there is a case or not a case, or however they want to, they can say, no, it doesn't fall, or yes, they do. So that leaves this whole determination, whether it really does fall under harassment or sexual harassment or Title IX, to the belief of a one person. So if the, every adult has a bias, everybody has biases. Somebody can make a statement about me and then Tim or anybody can, can hate me because of what one opinion is. Everybody has it. It's a natural instinct. So the fact that we have a policy that has to deal with harassment, sexual harassment and, and all that other stuff, and that it only determines whether it's a belief of somebody, whether it falls under Title IX or it falls under harassment. And if they feel it doesn't fall under any, then it doesn't go anywhere.
Isn't that true, whether it's written explicitly in the policy, though? Either way, I mean, it's still someone, it's still someone's responsibility. In our case, it's Lexi's within the school system. So it's, whether it's explicitly stated or not, we can get rid of that particular language throughout the policy, but it's still going to be up to our Title IX coordinator, regardless of whether or not we put it in the policy. Like, we're always going to have that individual factor in any, any administrator carrying out a policy, right?
But when it comes down to a child's right or a victim's right, the school, we determined if that child is either, becomes revictimized and gets no justice.
Or.
Or, or it does.
I totally hear what you're saying, Ivy.
The fact that me and many other parents have received no justice and the school has used these policies to protect themselves and not the child is disturbing.
But I'm just not sure how I'm not connecting in my own brain, how the language, this particular language feels superfluous, right? So in, in either case, whether it's written or not written, it, it still comes down to someone's decision-making, right? All policies come down to interpretation.
Right, but this legal language that you use.
Okay, such as?
And I don't have it quite with me.
Just the gist.
Being high autistic and ADHD, my brain goes in overload, but.
Just the gist would be helpful.
But if somebody believes that it's, it falls under or not, it's a belief, that you believe it does, not saying it does. So if, even though, say, my kid was sexually assaulted.
Just don't use individuals, though, Ivy.
All right.
Individual, individual cases, please.
Uh, say BlackBerry was sexually assaulted. And I filed a thing for that. If the Title Niner believes that that's not considered sexual assault, and she believes it's not and can say, no, we're not going to, it doesn't fall under Title IX. So it's their interpretation, belief isn't in your interpretation of what it is. What it should have language stating that according to state and federal, or according to the law is what it should state, whether it would fall under and be approved. Anytime, like, just like DHS, when you make an allegation that child's been sexually assaulted, the DHS has to investigate every report. Though DHS may say that as long as you have one protective parent, we don't have to, that's not true. The main law, because that's their belief, DHS's belief is that because you have one protective parent, you don't have to investigate sexual assault. That's a violation of the law. The law states that every report, whether the protective parents are not, that the sexual assault has to be investigated. So there's a, wording has a big thing. And the fact that we, attorneys, their job is not to protect the victim or the student or anything. The attorney, school attorneys' job is to protect the schools from lawsuits. So they don't have any vested interests. They can misguide or share whatever they want. Attorneys follow whatever their clients want or recommend. In closed doors, they can, the client can say, well, you know what? I know it's a violation, but I want you to go ahead and push it anyways. Attorneys are hired. They decide whether they want to pursue being misguided or not because it's their license. I hope that we can all put policies that protect the child. With the amount of situations that go on in our school, the fact that you can read on Facebook about the harassment and the stuff and students that, that don't have a voice, it is psychologically damaging for any student to not feel like they have a voice or to feel like they're, they're, they're hopeless or a family.
Ivy, what I'm looking for is a proposal. Does any of the board members have questions or state?
Well, I'm, I'm thinking more about what Ivy said. So is there, do we know, Becky, if there's a reason that the, that the lawyers stated it the way that they did, right? Because I, I guess there would be, it makes sense to me that it would say, you know, if you, if, I, I am completely ignorant to the entire process. So, but say, someone had submitted a, a claim of sexual harassment or sexual assault. There is that step of determining whether or not it's worth investigating, I guess is where she's taking issue with the belief. So is it, do we remove that piece so that it's?
I would not.
I don't know if I'm stating this.
Yes, I think, I think I'm hearing you. I would not recommend removing any of the language in this. I want to assure anyone who's watching this meeting or listening to this meeting that whether it falls under Title IX, main human rights or bullying, we take all complaints seriously. That all of these policies are here to protect, you know, the students and staff and families to, to ensure the efficient and effective, you know, running of the schools. And, and these policies that are before you today are specific to protecting, as you can see, it's broken out for students and employees from all types of harassment. So I think sometimes parents want to know, is that a Title IX or is that a bullying? And we try to help navigate that. But the end result is the same. It's thoroughly investigated. People do not always agree on the conclusions of the investigations. And I understand that. That's the human factor that I think you're talking about, Erica. But they're all thoroughly investigated. And we're trying to ensure that all students and employees are safe at school emotionally and physically.
Okay. Are there any board members who haven't spoken who would like to speak, including student representatives? So what we're looking for right now is a vote. And a vote would mean what?
A vote would mean that you're adopting it as recommended is, is what the vote would mean.
And then when we do for second reading, that just means when we vote for second reading, what does that mean exactly?
So the second reading, sometimes you can do a first reading and say, you know, would you investigate this particular issue before the? particular issue before the second reading? The second reading is also there to give, you know, adequate notice for, you know, the public to weigh in. That's another reason that we do two readings. It's rare that you will, you can do first and second reading at one time, but that's not best practice.
Thank you. So if we bring these policies for first reading, board members can suggest, or people from the community can suggest edits, that then would the policy committee, the policy committee taken those into consideration?
If you're wanting to edit it, then I think where you were pushing Ivy, you would need to make a very specific motion. Like, I I make a motion to amend the policy to eliminate the informal resolution process or the first paragraph of the informal resolution process. If you're concerned about, you know, the Title IX coordinator, you know, what she just discussed. So that would be another way to do that.
But that would be at first reading, not at second reading typically?
Well, at second reading, if it was, if the majority of the board voted against it, then it would go back for another revision.
At policy committee, that's the level.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Ivy, you want to say something else?
How do you make a motion?
You say, I, I. How do we propose to go to the language?
So you have the motion, you have a motion at the board level. And I think you couldn't make a, you can amend that motion. So Ivy, you could say, I amend the motion to read. And then you would vote on that amendment before you go back to the original if the amended motion failed.
All right, so I propose a motion?
Yeah.
Yep, I propose a motion to take Title IX back to the original before any of the changes and bring it back to the basic, which covers everything according to the law, and remove all this extra verbiage out.
So I think that's a different motion. I would not consider that an amended motion.
Yeah, I don't know how to say it.
That's okay.
I thought you were going to ask for a motion to bring this back to like first reading, correct?
Well, I want to make a motion.
For us to.
Verbiage.
Bring it back to look at it and amend and have a plan. Just kind of back it up a little bit. That's what I thought you were gonna.
Yeah.
I guess I'm confused. Are you looking at? I'm just trying to understand because so much is being said and lost.
And I'm on overload, so sorry.
Are you looking at this as what the executive order that Trump said?
I want to bring it back to what it should be. There's just a lot of verbiage in here that does not.
Because I'm just, I guess I'm just confused.
Yeah, just the way this has been rewritten, one, without having even been gone through the policy committee. None of these changes, most of all these changes weren't even proposed at the policy committee.
The language did exist prior, even though the all previous motions that were, all previous policies that we have adopted have had this verbiage in them. So it's not different than any other policy that we've adopted before. They have, the language is placed differently. So if you look at the crossed out pieces, it's the same verbiage. It's just put in a different location. So we have approved these. When Lexi was up there and talking, we did, we all voted to approve the new policy. And I realized that you were thinking it was reading something differently because you didn't think that the gender identity piece was included in there when it was. And I remember you being upset with that part of it. But this is all just crossed out. We're not able to see it because it is crossed out.
Before any changes were made, gender identity and sexual orientation was not in our Title IX. When Biden passed his, the law, we adopted according to the law. Now Trump passed a law, and I am asking that we change it according to what the law is now is.
That's what we did in April.
But in my understanding of it, it sounds like it reads the way that it should under Title IX.
Gender identity and sexual orientation should not be in here.
Well, it's too, right? It's both the state and federal being combined in this policy. So that's.
That's not how Title IX policy should be written. Because this leaves the Title IX coordinator to determine whether they want to follow the state or the federal. And that's not how Title IX should be, should be in there.
Well, it's sectioned up to the Title IX coordinator. She's getting the language elsewhere. It's not up to her whether they include all of them. It's what we've been proposed, what has been proposed through main school management. And so they're choosing to incorporate all three, the federal, the state, and the main human rights commission into the one single policy.
And I'm telling you, that's not how it is. There's a lot of extra stuff in here.
I'm not an expert, so I guess I can't argue that.
Yeah.
Can we? Can we possibly table this? And like almost like have a board workshop on it, why not? Have her come and talk? So we can, I mean, this seems like a lot. I'm confused.
So are you talking about having Lexi come?
Yeah.
Well, she's on Zoom if you have specific.
That's a lot for her to put on the spot on Zoom.
Well, no, I mean.
I think, I think we need to be more organized. And I think like if you could, it's a lot.
Well, yeah, if I had more time to have gone through this.
If you can come back and not just, just look at individual things and just bring those individual things to us instead of just all over the place, then we can maybe come to some agreement.
It would have been great to, but the last policy committee, when this was presented, it didn't go far.
I mean, as we're all here now.
Yeah.
If we can, and so then we can just, we can come to some agreement with staying focused.
That would be awesome because there's a lot of extra wording.
Motion, Tim.
Yeah, so I'm taking a motion that we can table this for now and bring it back to a future school board meeting for first reading.
And any discussion on the motion? Is there a second?
I second that motion. They'll give me a chance to pull this apart.
Ivy, would you be able to come with specific?
Yeah.
Like the particular pieces that you take issue with? Because I feel a little uncomfortable just going back, like reverting back completely the language. So for me, I think it would be helpful to know like what in particular next time you feel most passionately about so that we can understand it a bit better. Because I don't know that I could support at this point kind of reverting entirely. I do feel more comfortable with the pieces all being in here. But certainly want to hear, you know.
That'd be great. And then I can bring the original Title IX and then bring the different versions that I've been handed.
We have a motion on the table. We have a first and second. We'll just call for a vote to table. All those in favor? Okay, so well, it looks like we'll table this motion and bring it back. Later date. Unanimous vote.
So it'll be difficult, I think, to put this on the next agenda with the things that we have on the next agenda. And so this would be the last meeting in December. So I want to make sure that I understand what you're requesting. So you're requesting that Ivy go through and do this. I can present her with an editable version of the policy as it currently is. And then you're asking her to redline that on her own and put the edits in?
Yeah, we're just like, basically, we're just giving Ivy the opportunity to look through the changes and tell us the bullet point. Specifically, this is what.
That she wants to see.
And we're either going to agree or disagree. But just give her that opportunity. And then we'll have a vote.
I actually think it should go through the policy committee.
Yes.
So Ivy needs to present it to the policy committee and work on it there.
Yeah.
And then bring it to the board. Not as an individual, but through the committee.
That would be great.
Okay, so the next policy committee meeting, I think, is on. So I'm a little bit concerned about this because I'm just. What did I just tell you guys? I just told you something. I can look at all this. So the next, the next policy meeting is December the 16th. And I'm looking at Megan to see if she could look up and tell me what the what board meeting we have after the 16th.
I think that's too close.
So we have the third and then we have the 17th. And then Ivy is, you know, finished with her term. So I'm just trying to be, I'm trying to figure out how that all works. So I'm looking for some guidance from the board.
But we could, we could certainly have the present at the 17th meeting because that would. Oh, wait, because that's the 16th and the 17th.
Is that enough of a turnaround time for the committee?
Yeah, what are your thoughts on that?
I don't know. Because the last time I tried to, to share information, it didn't go well.
Sure, but what you're doing, you're going to the, you're going to the policy committee with your edits, right?
I'm going to bullet point all the facts. We're going to bring copies of the original Title IX. I'll share a few of my perspectives of how it has failed students. Some areas I think we should be looking more at. And then if there's stuff that needs to come from superintendent or the Title IX coordinator, they can share that. So as I go through this, I can kind of look at that and then bullet point what I think or what needs to be changed or just what I'm trying to say tonight. Because this was a lot to try and rip through in such a short time, especially with all these different changes and having to, you know, go through all the legals and the laws and stuff like that, so.
There is, in my opinion, a lot of what I read was, was a lot of process change, too. So it wasn't a lot of legalist change necessarily. There was a lot that kind of laid out the process for when someone submits something to the Title IX coordinator, too. So there's not quite as much, the process stuff doesn't seem as contentious to me because that's more about how people do what they do to follow it. But, so that I'm, you know, I'm in full support of. But I think it would be helpful to know what you feel disadvantages students in that.
And I, you know, I guess I would still recommend Ivy giving you an editable version so that it's clearly laid out of what you're wanting to change so that the board can have both recommendations in front of them. And that night, because I think that's where Tim is getting a little bit.
Yes, just, I, I'm just being honest. I couldn't quite follow.
No, I know, and my brain is on.
So I'm happy to have Colleen give you. I think what would be easiest for you is if we give you a copy of what we presented to the board and then you can do your strike throughs in a different color or something.
Well, I could do that. That can lay out all the legal forms. I have a lot at home. I mean, I have piles of paper because I've been going through Title IX quite a bit.
Yeah, but I think it's.
More that you got, everybody can understand because ADHD, we go on overload and it's hard to get it.
If you just, if you more, if you could even type it, I think that'd be easier than if us just listening. If you could.
I'll be glad to type it. So why don't I do this? Because the 16th is pushing really close to the 17th. I, my final is due this Sunday and then I'm off for school vacation. So I will take that next week to get it done. And then I will send it to Colleen and she can send it out to everybody prior to the policy committee so that whatever can be shared, submitted or whatever, and then it can be all discussed in policy committee. And then the whole board can be included in that.
Does that work for everyone?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can we also hear from the students on our regarding Title IX as too, if they wanted to share information? Because I think.
Invitation is always open.
Okay, perfect.
Any other board comments at this time?
No.
Okay. So we do have the motion for the first read on the table still. Are we, we've, I mean, we've tabled it. Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay.
Do we all need to vote on that or just?
We already voted.
Okay.
At the table. All right, any public comment at this time?
I do have stuff, Lexi, that I did not see in here, yes. So I don't know if you want me to read through what's in here. She was kind of responding to some of our conversation. Do we want to hear? So referring to the definition of harassment, she said, "The federal law defines harassment as unwelcome conduct based on a protected characteristic like race, gender, religion, age, disability, et cetera, that is so severe or pervasive that it creates a hostile or abusive environment for the victim. This can include offensive conduct, slurs, or physical assaults, and it is illegal when it interferes with employment or results in an adverse employment action such as termination or demotion. Simple teasing or isolated, less serious incidents are generally not considered illegal harassment." So that is a helpful clarification, I think, for us. And then she said, oh, referring to the belief language in the policy. She said, "It's not based on personal belief. It's based on 50-plus hours of training by lawyers and experts in Title IX." And then she said, "There is no extra verbiage. These words are from the federal Title IX policy." And then she was just letting us know, sorry, Lexi, that she was here and available to answer any questions I completely missed that those comments were in there.
Okay. That wraps up our new business. We have a public comment section. If there are folks on Zoom who'd like to.
We just have Lexi and Jay, so I don't see any.
No. Okay, we'll close our public comment section. We have school board comments. So people who are wanting to speak up or say something, this is your time to do it.
Nothing from.
Seeing none. We have no executive sessions tonight. So without objection, I declare the meeting adjourned at 7:06.